Our final slated budget review workshop. Tonight, we have just three departments to review this evening, and we are going to start off with general assistance. We did speak with them on the first time. There has been a slight change, so we are bringing them back just to kind of bring everybody up to speed. So, welcome back Denise. It's under the first section, governmental, general government.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. We just had a slight change on the line 49 of the emergency housing. As the shelter will probably start billing us for bed nights, so that's going to increase that line by a substantial amount, probably.
Right. And, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, and there's also changes to-
This is health and welfare. Well, it's, this is page, well, it's one of two, but it's under-
I'm in the right section.
Thank you, I get it.
So, so right now, it's allotted to be, so line 49 is 75,000. What are we looking at for an increase? That is the increase?
That is the increase. What was it, 20, was it?
It was down to 30,000.
30,000, yeah. So now it's 75?
Yeah.
And subsequently, the, the reven, yeah, the revenue, the state revenue, welfare reimbursement should, you know, tie into that with the increase. That will go up as well.
We did increase it in this.
Yep, yep.
You, you mentioned that, you're saying the homeless shelter is going to be charging? Do we know?
Yes.
What has changed there? Because they, I mean, it hasn't before. I mean, what is, what's going on in regards to the increase?
Well, they, they're looking for more funding, and they just, they just haven't done it in, in past years, but they need more funding, and they, there is a law within the general assistance statutes that we can presume eligibility for 30 days when people are in a shelter. So they're going to start doing that. After the 30 days will be, we don't have to require verification from them.
Verification in regards to the individuals that are staying there?
Verification that they are eligible for general assistance. It's a presumed eligibility.
Okay.
So.
So, I mean, if, I'm trying to articulate what I'm, I'm just, so, I mean, I think that if, it is just, if we don't have to like, know or assume what it is, I guess my question is, shouldn't, shouldn't we, like, couldn't we ask for that, just to ensure that, you know, because I mean, this is, that the taxpayers of Waterville know what their money is going towards, and-
Right, but with this law, the presumed eligibility, you can, this went into effect, I think, basically for Portland Shelter about five years ago, and it was never used by other local shelters, but now they want to use that language, the presumed eligibility, to start billing for at least 30 days, and then, once that 30 days is over, the, the client or the guest at the shelter will be required to provide the verification to, to determine whether they are eligible going forward.
Okay. And what would that, what would that proof of eligibility, what would an example of that be? How do they go through that process? How burdensome is it for them?
After the first 30 days? They're required to provide, look, there's so many rules, but they're required to provide, you know, if they had a job, when that job ended, that does play into whether they're eligible for general assistance or not. If they quit a job, they were fired from a job, they could be disqualified after that from receiving any additional assistance. There's so many, there's other factors that come into play, whether they've been a repeat applicant, whether they, after that 30 days, whether they were a resident of another town immediately prior to entering the shelter. That other town is responsible, so we would then have to refer them to the other town to get billed if the shelters chose to do that. Yes.
So, you, you did say though, that the reimbursement will go up because of this as well, correct?
Right.
So, do we think it's gonna, not necessarily balance each other out, but do we have an idea of?
We, we get 70% back.
Right, right, yeah, but I just, I see that you, you changed those amounts, but I'm just wondering, like, yeah, if we could have, just like, you know, Councilor Gillie said, like, a better idea for the taxpayers?
Well, and, you know, my concern is that, you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk in regards to the unhoused in the city of Waterville, and obviously, we have a Waterville, you know, the homeless shelter here. So, my concern is, the phone calls that I'm going to be receiving is, while, you know, while taxes go up, other, other communities that do not have a homeless shelter, I mean, subsequently, the taxpayers of Waterville are going to be subsidizing the homeless shelter. So, I, I think that, you know, we need to, any, any questions that we have, you know, especially when we're going to be, when, when the city's going to be essentially paying for it, or a part of it, you know, I, I think that we, we really need to do our due diligence in regards to, you know, because I, I know for a fact that my phone will ring and say, why do we need a homeless shelter when, you know, when my tax is going up, and I can't afford to live in my house or buy groceries, especially in today's political climate? Why, why do I need to have my taxpayer dollars going towards a homeless shelter?
I don't know if that makes sense, but that's, I'm anticipating a call.
And so again, that reimbursement is 70%.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I was just trying to, like, do some rough math, because previously, the estimated reimbursement was obviously, like, way less, and now we're in the positive, it looks like, for that, but then, I'm looking at the correct, yeah.
It should be the 137,800, the total of the general assistance times 70%. Should be what's up in the revenue line.
You said 137?
It's that bottom category total.
Line 45? The 137,8, is that what you said?
Line 16.
Line 45, and, on the budget, under that.
Okay, okay, yeah, I see it, thank you.
Other 137,8, the total expenditures, yeah.
Times 70.
Right, so it-
It's also 111.
Right, and that's with the changes, but I think she was asking about, before the changes, what the revenue would have been?
Yeah, I was kind of comparing what we had prior to what we were, the update that we were given, so I was just trying to-
I think it was 68,960, when, when that line item was at 30,000 instead of 75.
Yes.
I'm getting kind of lost here. Can I, can I just get a recap?
So, so what we have here is a line item for, for emergency housing.
Correct.
That's 75,000.
Up from 30,000.
Right, and this, but it's consistent with last year. It was, it was lower in a previous version of this budget, but it's basically the same amount as we had last year, even though we didn't use it all. We're anticipating that we'll have, that we'll need it because of, basically, of a new billing from the homeless shelter, right? So, but we're, the city's responsibility is only 30% of that cost.
Right.
So, in a way, you could look at this as, this is, this is a way for us to keep people off the street, in a, in a way that's, you know, this is, this is a rare opportunity for the, for the homeless shelter to fund their services, which we also really need as a community, so that we don't have people outside.
I understand that, but people are already outside now, and we have a homeless shelter, so that's, that's a concern.
Well, that's right.
And I know that for a fact, so.
Yeah, of course, that's right, because people don't have enough places to live.
But, again, my concern boils down to the taxpayers of Waterville, that are already getting, you know, a lot, a lot of financial burden, paying for it, essentially. And I understand that there might be laws in place, but, again, you know, I, I have a ward that, that I answer to, so I want to make sure that, when I get the phone calls, which I do, and I answer every single one of them, that I have the answers for them.
Previously, were we receiving the 70% in the previous years as well?
Mm-hmm. So, I'm just saying, it's, it's actually, it's actually not a change to the budget.
Yeah, it's fluctuated by a couple percent in the last, and it's been trending down since 2023.
Yeah, I had decreased it going into this budget, because I didn't think we-
Right, because it seemed-
We needed the 75 until this came into play with the, with the shelter, so I just kept it at the 75.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Me too.
All right, next up, school. No, you gotta press, press the gray button down, and just, and then it'll turn blue. Hold it.
Yep, it looks like the gray button's on. Is that working?
It's on, but I don't think it's working. I mean, it's lit up, but I don't think it's working.
Oh, now it's, wait, hold on. These wireless-
Testing, there, okay, all right.
Now you're live. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for having us here tonight, and for your continued partnership and support of the schools. Clearly, your investment in education, particularly over the last five years, has been transformative for Waterville Public Schools, and we're truly grateful for that. As we present our budget tonight, I want to acknowledge the challenging and uncertainty of the financial future for Maine, and for the rest of the country. Our goal in this budget development process has been to maintain high-quality programming and essential services, while also being mindful of the shared responsibility to the Waterville taxpayers. I'm confident that the budget that we'll present meets the diverse needs of our student population, that, for the first time in many years, has grown. And among that student body is a growing number of students with special needs, a growing population of multilingual learners, and a significant percentage of our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. These students rely on us, and they rely on us for more than just their education, and it's our job to ensure that they have the support, resources, and opportunities that they need to succeed. So, again, I thank you for your partnership, look forward to working together, and I would turn budget presentation over to our Finance Director, Paula Poehler. Thank you.
Hello. Now, is this one working? Can you hear me?
I can't.
I guess you can. Before we start actually going over the budget, I just wanted to let you know what our budget process is. I think I say this every year, but I, but I'd like you to know how much time goes into developing this budget till we get to, to this point tonight. We start our budget process, like, in November and December. At that point in time, requests are made from the department heads, to the principals, or to the directors, for what they were, they're asking for in the, in the following year. From there, the principal will get the budgets, they'll go over them, then they'll meet with the department chair, so they'll go over their, their budgets as well with the department chairs, and then, at, in the same time, central office administration is looking at their budgets as well, from, from, from a distance at this point in time, and we're going over line by line of the budget that they're going to come over and present to us for their school, and we'll have our questions prepared before they actually get to the office. So, in totality, our budget is 2,429 lines, and we, and we do go over every single one of those individually, we look at trends, we look at histories, no matter, if we have to go back five years, 10 years, and then the principals will come over and justify their budgets to us, and then we'll, we'll answer their questions, but we'll have a lot of questions for them, too. So it goes through an awful lot before it even gets to the Board of Education. After it goes through all those steps, then it'll go to the board, which we just did on Monday evening, to tell them the culmination of the entire, all the cost centers that we've taken a few months to go over it, to get here. So I believe that you have handed out to you the revenue sheet and our summary sheet. I think your, your revenue sheet's probably on the top, okay?
Yeah.
That's probably the most important sheet, so we, so what, on the summary sheet, which is probably the one underneath that one, is just showing you all of our cost centers, and showing the history of a few years, and the budget that we are presenting this evening, which is $34,208,687.23, and you'll see the cost centers on the left-hand side, and where their budgets are right now, what the increase or decrease is, and in the end, you will see that, on the expenditure side of our budget, when we finished presenting everything to the school board, we were up $1,926,422.67, which was an increase of 5.97 from the current year that we're in right now. So that's the budget that we presented to the school board, to be able to run Waterville Public Schools for '25, '26. On the next page, well, well, it's your first page, I think, is the, our revenue sheet. So the summary sheet's just telling you what our expenditures are, our revenue sheet is saying, how, how are we going to pay for this? So when we get to that part, towards the right-hand side, you'll see '25, '26, which will start out with what our total budget is, and then it'll go down and tell you the revenues that we think we can put towards lowering the taxpayers of Waterville's obligation. And the first section that you'll see, is, is everybody following me? I just want to make sure that I'm, if anybody had any questions, and it's this sheet right here. This is the revenue sheet.
Yeah, you're in the second, or, I guess it's the third column from the left, though it starts with 19 million, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yep, so if we look at that one, you'll see the '25, '26 year, that'll be our budget at the top, and the first section of revenues that we will, that we will get for '25, '26 is going to be the state subsidies. The good news there is, which really helped us a lot this year, was that was an increase of 1.7 million over the current year that we're in. And you'll see where our lines are broken down, so we get, the, the total state subsidy that we're going to get is 21,534,6137, and it breaks it down to, to what degree? State subsidy is the 19,125, and then the next line would be the MMTC state subsidy, because a few years ago, they, MMTC used to be part of, different part of the 279, now they're their own entity, which shows up on our 279, and that's their money for their, to run the MMTC center, and that's the 3,089. And then we receive, to be part of the, the Kennebec Valley Consortium, because we're part of that with Winslow, Waterville, Oakland, Fairfield, Skowhegan, I think, we receive a subsidy from the state for $104,687.80, and then you'll see that, you'll see the EduCare funding. Now, again, EduCare is a pass-through on our 279. It doesn't affect our, our money, but it comes in as a dollar figure that we know that we have to provide to them. So that figure is 784,951 for next year. So we have to take that off, the grand total that was on our 279. The part that's coming to the school is 21,534, that's-
And do those funds have stipulations in terms of EduCare programming? So, for example, if, does that limit our ability to, not that I'm saying, I'm suggesting that we would want to, but does that limit, does, does that come with stipulations in terms of how we would arrange the EduCare program here in Waterville? Not at all? So we still have all the latitude in how that program is administered?
We don't have any.
Oh, okay, so it is-
It's just a pass-through.
No, it doesn't change it, because we don't have any, we literally just-
What it is, is they have to have a, a school system to be able to provide-
I got you. It's, it's its own.
So they, it just comes out.
So we have no, no, no say.
No control or anything. We don't pay people, we don't hire people, we don't pay their bills, we don't do anything, but what we do do is, when they put it a dollar figure in our 279, which is separate from what we would get, I have to just take that dollar figure, place it on here, and every month, we send them a check for what they get.
Gotcha.
So, are those monies just for the pre-K programs? Because EduCare is essentially a head start, but they also offer pre-K, right? It's part of KV cap.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I'm just wondering, just out of curiosity, the money that comes in to the school system, is that in order to provide a pre- is that in order to provide a pre-K program for Waterville? Or does it include all of the Head Start money?
And that's something I don't think we would know. We just get their money as a total. And that says, every month, send them their money. So that's what we do.
But they're operating their own programs.
Yeah, they're operating separately from the school.
And they get other state subsidy for KV cap? That their entire budget's not $784,000?
I assume, right. I assume this is just for pre-K.
And you're probably, I think you're probably right, yes. I think I did see that on the 279, it says pre-K, so I think you're right. What I do is I take that figure right away and put it on the sheet because I know that's not our money, so that we can send them their subsidy, per se, on a monthly basis.
And they negotiate that number themselves separately with, no?
No, they don't. What they do is it's calculated on the 279 based on their enrollment and other criteria and free and reduced as well. And so when we get the 279, it just shows what the calculations that they did on their behalf, which I'm not sure what all that formula is for them. And this is what you'll pass through to them for the year.
And they close their funding gaps through other sources?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, they have to fundraise.
Yeah, they do, yeah. The next section you'll see is the school revenues. And you can see that I have listed on the left-hand side, there's a lot of the different monies that we'll bring in, aside from the state subsidies, helping to offset the obligation to the taxpayers as well. We have, you know, for instance, tuition. We have little things, business services, as you'll notice as you go down, you'll see it says $327,000, that's with Winslow, and $180,000 with Vassaburl. And that is because we're the business office in Waterville Public Schools for the three school districts. We handle their HR, their payroll, their AP, balance their books, you know, provide the information to the Department of Education. And that really helps all three of us out because we are able to get some revenue back in, and then they don't have to hire an entire central office because they've got it with us. So that's been a really good, a good thing for all three of our districts. So you'll see at the end of that one, we say $819,875.93 we can produce there. We put in $300,000 out of an undesigned fund. We go down to the next section with shared revenues. I don't know why that name's like that, that's probably been there for years. But those two things that you see there are business services that we get from the MMTC for the $63,000. That's also for the services in our office. Because now they have their own money on the 279 for their, for them, so we get that from them. And then we get a reimbursement for them for utilities. So that will produce $105,383.26. And then you'll go down to the section of adult education. So in adult education, they'll get a state allocation for themselves. That's $163,000. Unfortunately, that is a decrease from the current year. And then we get a regionalization from RSU-18 because our director is, she's a regional director with them as well, so we get a subsidy from them. Not subsidy, but a cost-sharing allocation. And then she, for her programs that she runs in the enrichment, she estimates that she'll be able to pull in $22,000 next year, which leaves a total there of $222,582.53. Unfortunately, it is a $49,000 decrease because of the, some of the programming. So at that point in time, out of that $34 million budget, we're saying that we can come up with, between all of our revenue sources, $22,982,703.9, which would leave us asking the city of Waterville for $11,225,984.14, which would be a $144,782.48 increase over the current year. We tried really hard to do the best we could do to, you know, to get a lot of our own revenues and so we could not be asking for another huge increase from the city. As Peter had mentioned, the city's been very good to us when we were going through the last few years, trying to get some of the salaries up to where they needed to be. So that's, we've been very much appreciative of that. And this year, we're hoping to be able to give back a little by not asking for such a huge increase.
Well, obviously, that's very good news. And thank you for, I know this is a very big lift as far as figuring out the budget and how you're going to provide all the services that need to be provided. I'm just wondering, because we are hearing a lot in the news about funding, federal funding potentially being pulled, just curious how that might play out for you folks.
Well, that's a very good question, and I'm so fortunate I have our Assistant Superintendent behind me, Jen Allen. And yes, we've been concerned about that as well. And I think everyone in the state of Maine, probably in the nation, are concerned about that. But she might be able to fill you in a little bit better than I might be able to?
I mean, the three of us, Peter, Paula, and I were on a call commissioner.
The answer is, we really don't know. I mean, nobody in the state of Maine knows what's going to happen right now. We have not been given our allocation for FY '26 for our Title I-A or Title II funds. And, yeah, and if, and we will have to talk about that if that, we have, in our title funds, we have $1.4 million in salaries. So that would be a different conversation.
Okay. And to piggyback on that, and I'm not being a Debbie down here at all, but it also would be, we also get local entitlement, which is special education funding, along with the titles. And that one, we have about $500,000 there. So would we, would be in a bind? Absolutely. We're hoping it doesn't go that route. It's probably happening with the city as well with the different funding, I'm not sure. But yeah, is that scary? Very. And we didn't want to present that piece of it tonight because we're hoping we don't have to go down that road.
Sure.
And, but it's a great question, and I kind of thought it was going to come up. But we get our fingers crossed, and we're praying every day that somehow they get this worked out that we get our funding.
Great, thank you very much.
How many students, how many K through 12 students does Waterville have?
Our October 1st count was 1623. We're over 1650 right now. We've had an influx since that time, mostly of multilingual learners.
Speaking of multilingual learners, how many ESOL students do you have currently? And how much has it increased over the last, say, like, last year to this year?
Jen will correct me if I'm wrong, but we ended the school year '23, '24 with, I believe, 52 multilingual students. By October 1st, just getting through one summer, we were up to 97. So that's what you would see if you went on the data dashboard, you'd probably see that 97 number because it's based on October 1st. Currently, I say currently, meaning, best I know from last week, I believe it's 155. And, you know, we talked about adult education. And Hannah and her team have dedicated resources to serve that population as well. Because for every child that we're getting, there's a family, too, that needs resources.
How many adult ed individuals do you serve a year?
I'm not sure. It's a hard number to count because they only would show up if they, it's not going to tell us, the people that stop in for the Community Navigator resource, it's only going to tell us if they actually enroll in courses.
What is your average student-teacher ratio right now? Or I guess it must vary from building to building, but...
It varies, yeah, grade to grade, building to building, and program to program. Be hard to say.
And it would tend to be in the teens, in the 20s, in the 30s, though? Can you be that general or not?
Not really. Because the average is probably not a reality for many classrooms. You probably have some of the general courses, like at the high school, for example, that you could see upwards of 26, 27. A lot of the specialized courses that might have seven or eight, so.
Right. It depends on the situation.
Yeah. What about in the, is it easier to make those estimations in the grade school where you don't have that sort of specialization across classrooms?
Yeah, I mean, we, one of the things that we did with the city's help was we increased the number of kindergarten teachers. So those classrooms, I believe, are between 10 and 12. This year, we lost a teacher. And so we consolidated, so they went up to 14, 15. And then every grade beyond that, you'll see a little, it's a kind of a slow increase each year to get them adjusted to what they're going to see when they get to junior high and high school.
And do you have any learning metrics that you can either point to as wins or problematic? For example, NUIA scores or some other metric that you could talk about in terms of where our student body is at? Either regionally, across the state, in comparison to nationally? I just want to, I want to understand how we're doing and where our students are at.
I'll let Jen talk about test scores.
Okay.
Any of our test scores can be seen on the ESEA data dashboard. And so you can, you could go on the dashboard at any point and see our test scores and compare them with any of the other cities in the state of Maine. We are, I'd say, bouncing back, I wish I had my scores with me, bouncing back from COVID. And when you look at the students by cohort, of students who have been here from grade to grade, they are growing. We only have two years of data for the state of Maine because they have changed the assessment over the last few years. I mean, I could, I, I outscored the state for science. There's different things, we have work to do. We are going and looking at our subgroups also because all students should achieve. Our subgroups that we're working with to make, I say, more achievements are economically disadvantaged, are multilingual population, and are students who qualify for special education.
And how do those numbers compare with similar communities?
Have a higher population of those subgroups.
And is that one of the major impediments here? Or what are the other structural problems? So when thinking about the 1628, or 1623 students that we have and their overall success, the, you know, is the fact that a significant portion of them are coming from low-income families or are ESL or multilingual families, is that the primary challenge?
Yes, those would be subgroups that have, that are the lower test scores.
And what, so, I'm sorry, I'm asking all these questions. I really, you know, I want to see progress. I feel very deeply the plight of students here in Waterville. From my perspective, one of them is not just low income, but that's really a euphemism for generational poverty, generational trauma, often of trauma of neglect because parents are holding down multiple jobs, right? And they're not getting the support that they need. And I want to understand how to lift, lift these students up and what kinds of decisions can be made here that can provide the sorts of resources. I know you just engaged in a visioning process, you engaged the public. What were the, what were the takeaways from that? Were there, did that process generate ideas that are either reflected in this budget or aspirational things that, given the right opportunity, could be implemented?
Do you want to talk about the strategic plan?
Yeah, referencing the strategic plan process, we're not done that yet. We had two rounds of feedback, one for staff, I'm just going to hold this, one for the community in the fall. And then the strategic planning team spent the winter, up until just a few weeks ago, actually drafting the plan based on that feedback. We have another staff feedback loop April 30th. May 5th will be a community forum to get feedback on the draft plan. So that's still a work in progress.
Have, are there outlines of ideas that you're, that you're willing to share yet that are interesting? Or are you still premature?
I would say it's premature, and I don't have it in front of me, so.
But it will be at those forums?
So May 5th is the community?
What about staff vacancies? How many, how many teachers, I mean, are you fully staffed? I mean, how are we looking there?
Teachers were, teachers were good. Like any district you talk to, technician positions are tough to fill. There's a lot of, there's a lot of movement between districts. So we have a lot of turnover. Teachers, you don't tend to see a lot of turnover during the course of the year, but it's different with.
Like, you're trying to like ed techs?
Yep.
Ed techs, okay.
Yep.
Do you see it trying to like, in regards to compensation, perhaps? Or what do you think that, what do you think that issue is in regards to not being able to?
Well, part of this budget is in response to the state, new state law that upped the minimum wage for educational technicians. And we'll negotiate with that bargaining unit next year. I'm sure that'll have implications, so.
So overall, the morale amongst teachers, good? Like, we're, like, good? Good?
I might not be the best guy to ask.
I think so.
I think so.
In terms of the student body, do you have a sense of how that population is moving? How transitory is that population? I don't know the terminology you use, but I'm sure you have terminology that describes what I'm trying to get at here.
Yeah, that word fits. We've seen, as our numbers indicate, the past couple of years, we've seen a lot more coming in to Waterville than going out. As the homeless liaison, that is still very much an issue. And what that, what that means, in our case, typically, we have currently about 72 students that qualify for McKinney-Vento. Majority of those are what we would call doubled up. That means there's more than one family living in a dwelling that's not necessarily equipped to house two families. The other thing that we see is people getting priced out of houses in Waterville or not able to find them. If they move to a neighboring community because they're evicted or their home isn't adequate, they have the legal right to stay in school in Waterville, and we have a legal obligation to transport them. And that's not just the school day, that's for all activities and athletics as well. So we try as best we can within our resources to eliminate those barriers. But like I said, we got about 72 on the books right now.
So out of the 1623 at $34 million or so, that's about $21,000 a student, average across all of them. Is it, does it, I am quite certain that the cost of administering education to special need students is much higher than other students.
Can be.
Yep. And I'm sure that it's, it costs a different total to educate a kindergartner versus a 12th grader. Can you, can you talk about that a little bit? Like, the cost as a child travels through the educational system?
Yeah, just to start, it gets at this, but the data dashboard that Jen mentioned, you'll get a more accurate per-student cost number than just taking that $34 million. Because the other, you got to remember that we, although we're a K-12 district... Because the other, you got to remember that we, although we're a K-12 district, the Mid-Maine Technical Center brings a little over 400 students that do not live in Waterville, into Waterville every day. They're, they're included in that. A couple hundred students that access adult education every year are not included in that. You know, with EduCare on our campus, you know, we really are a birth to, I think Hannah's oldest student was 84 this year, so it's not as simple as just saying that. But you're right, there's all kinds of, when you look at per student cost, it's, I don't necessarily think it's by age. It is more, we have a, we have a responsibility to individualize education and services for all kids. So the, the classroom is one thing, the feeding them is another. Talk about federal funding, you know, that's a, that's a scary one right there, just because we have so many kids that rely on us to feed them twice, twice a day. Special services, certainly, you know, if we have students that, you know, need to, if we can't serve them in school and we got to send them somewhere else, it's a heavy expense. We have students that require one-to-one attention over the course of the day, so it's not by grade as much as it is by individual student need.
I'd be happy to share. I've used the ESA dashboard and it really does have a lot of information there that, and you can compare to other districts statewide, just about every metric you can imagine, so I'd be happy to send the link to the council and, yeah. It's very interesting.
Any other questions for the school? Seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
12 minutes of trivia. I think that's all we got tonight, right? Oh, no, fire department, hi.
Leave me up here all night.
Yes, yeah, that just.
I can make that recommendation.
You want me to sit in the middle?
Okay.
Okay. And they're dated, so, right, like, so just always look for the, the closest date, yeah.
No, don't play with the table. We mean no injuries.
So the first thing I'm going to put in for is a new table up here?
No.
Fair enough.
Oh, we have a new one?
I think this is just a handout for.
Why?
Yeah.
I can. I'm going to start the conversation just like that.
Um, this, this, yeah, well, for the, for the sake of this, we won't look at this particular piece. The third ambulance proposal with the changes with the school and things, but, no. I probably figured that out, though. Okay, so, welcome back. We love you so much. The first time, we said, hey, let's do that again.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. That makes me feel good.
Yeah.
Although nobody's, nobody's up here clapping like they were the other night.
Yeah.
It's not fair, is it?
Yeah.
That's a good strategy.
I was feeling great the other.
Yeah.
Bring cheerleading section.
Yeah.
I got one, oh, here. These two gentlemen.
Come on, guys.
I believe that's Joelr back there, so.
That is?
Yeah, we can.
So I think for the purpose of this discussion, since we've already reviewed the budget, I think the purpose of this discussion is to kind of talk about the, the handout in a little more depth of the, the third ambulance proposal. You know, we've had, we've had a few weeks since we've started the budget process and some other discussions and things that have come to light, meetings and whatnot with, you know, Thayer and, we had the meeting with Inland on Tuesday. So let's jump right into, Everett, why don't we talk about the handout that you guys gave us first? Let's run, let's run through what this is and kind of, this kind of sets the tone, I think, right?
It kind of does. Can, yeah, let's, let's start there and then there's a couple more things in this handout we'd like to go over and like, like Mayor Morris said, we've, we've had numerous, 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 lots of discussions over the last couple of weeks. And one of the bigger ones that we've taken out of this is this transport algorithm, which kind of gives us a really good snapshot of how many times we know we're, we're going to be running to Augusta and then some on top of that. So Everett knows all these terminologies way more than I do, so if he's willing, we'll let him talk about those and then we'll kind of go from there.
He's getting ready to go on vacation, he's willing.
What's that?
Did you get ready to go on vacation? He's pretty willing.
Yeah, I know, right. I took him out to supper tonight.
Nice.
Smooth things over. It's been, the last couple of weeks have been pretty busy.
Lots of different things, but, so this destination decision tree. So this, this document isn't, isn't necessarily new. This was originally drafted years ago when Thayer became outpatient only and when they moved all inpatient services down to Augusta for Maine General. What we did is we got together with some of our EMS partners and Maine General, and the other day, we went through this document to make it more relevant, kind of clean it up a little bit as far as, you know, the best way to present this as clinical guidance for our EMS clinicians moving forward. Right now, what we do in the city of Waterville to navigate, you know, whether we transport to Thayer versus Augusta, we're already making these clinical decisions now. We're using this document to sort of help project how many times our ambulances are going to be leaving the city and leaving it basically uncovered, which is, we certainly anticipate is going to be a lot more often losing Inland Hospital. Because these cases here, as you can see, there's just some cases and based on clinical assessment and patient presentation, that the appropriate, most appropriate emergency department destination is not going to be Thayer because of the sort of lack of specialty care services, inpatient services, surgical services and so forth. Patients that require immediate stabilization, multi-systems trauma, patients having, you know, as, as acute stroke or having a significant heart attack, seizures and stuff like that, will always go to the closest ER for stabilization, you know, that, that won't change. But there's those other, you know, sick or injured patients that are stable enough to go ahead and make the, you know, 20-minute trip down to Augusta or Reddington Fairview if, if the patient has, chooses to do so, wants to go there. So, you know, we take these and we look at the data based on last year's projections on our, more of our high acuity calls, which it's that, that paper, at the top it says provider primary impression. These are the primary impressions that I hand selected that generally, pre-hospital-y, are our high acuity calls that will likely lead to some sort of inpatient or surgical intervention. And as you can see, just based on those totals, we're right, we're just under 700. What will cause us to go well over that 700 call threshold is patients who choose to go by choice want to go to Augusta. So they may have a low acuity complaint, but they may say, take me to Augusta, that's where I want to be, that's my preferred hospital. And last year, we had documented over 100 of those that we took, we took to Augusta and many of those were by choice.
Well, that's on top of this 673 or so.
Yeah.
It was 119 times last year we went to Augusta and most of those were patient choice.
You know, these, these calls here, again, variability would be based on patient relative stability. These are the cases that, that will ultimately end up with an inpatient admission. So we can take that data and, and we can sort of project, you know, at least a third of our calls, at least a third of our calls will have to go to a, a more capable, appropriate destination hospital, i.e. ACH in Augusta.
Yeah. And so this is 2024, calendar year 24. Is, are these numbers pretty stable across other years?
I think so. Again, we, we started the ambulance program July 1st of '22, so we don't have a tremendous amount of sampling. We have a couple of years.
Yeah.
So I would be guarded as far as making any sort of future projections. I would, I would like to see at least a couple more years worth of data to see if this continues to trend as is. You know, I, this, this past summer, we actually had a generally calm, calm summer and then things really ramped up, cold and flu season. This summer, it could be complete opposite. We, we just don't know. And that's the problem with this business is, is you can't predict the future.
Yeah.
So, just so I'm clear, these, the 673 that we see here, these are individuals who you would normally have been able to take to Thayer but will now have to go to Augusta?
No. This is, these are patients that would have to go to a, a minimum of an inpatient capable or surgical capable hospital. So there could have been plenty of these cases we took to Inland.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, I see.
So with, take Inland out of the picture, now we're, we're sort of, we're limited now on those, on those capable hospitals. Again, if they're unstable, we got a patient with trauma, car accident, they're unstable, they require blood, they require airway intervention. They're going to go to Thayer and, and Thayer understands they're going to get, you know, critical patients and, but that's, that's part of the, that's part of being an emergency department.
And then that would be Delta's, in Delta's hands to get them down to Augusta once they've been stabilized.
Yeah, I mean, Delta would get first refusal on that trans, transport.
I got you.
Depending on the case, you know, depending on the type of medical trauma case, they'll go to Augusta or, or to a trauma center, Bangor or Portland.
Right.
Larger hospitals, so, yeah.
So, I mean, that kind of gives us a, a sampling based on that run algorithm and that algorithm will be something that will have to be posted in our trucks. The issue with taking patients like this to Thayer is they, you know, they're going to get them stabilized and then they have to be moved again. So we take a patient off the stretcher, we put them in a bed, they get them stabilized and then they got to get back on a stretcher, get back in an ambulance and go down the road again. You're trying to, and every time you do that, you know, a patient gets jostled around, it's just much easier to take them to the appropriate hospital the first time. And that's what Thayer or Maine General is asking us to do. That will help their ER out at Thayer and, but it also helps the patient out too. And they get one bill instead of being billed twice for an ambulance service, which is a big deal.
The, the last time we had you up here, you had referenced a number, 35%, I think, 35% of your total calls were stacked.
That is correct.
And so that applies to this number as well, so is, is, would that be?
Well, yeah, I mean, 35% of our total call volume is stacked.
Yeah.
Meaning 1600, 1700 calls a year, we have more than one ambulance out at a time.
Yeah.
So we know for a fact, well, what, I mean, not a fact, but we are pretty confident that a third of our calls are close to, you know, 800 of them are going to go to Augusta. So I stack two calls on top of each other, I send one truck to Augusta, the other truck's on the road, I now have no more trucks to cover the city. You know, we, we look at how long does a call take in Augusta? We tried to run that through our system today, that, that was harder to grab. You know, 20 minutes down, 15 minutes or so to drop the patient off, get the paperwork done, 20 minutes back, you know, you're looking at close to an hour runtime. But then, you know, these are the things that you just never know, but that we run up against all the time. But Tuesday, we had a crew pick up a patient with a angulated compound fracture that had to go to Augusta. So they take care of the patient at home, they bring the patient to Augusta. Now our air cast is on their, their leg, they need x-ray first thing before they can take that cast off. Crew's got to wait to get our equipment back. They also now need a drug box, so they drove all the way back in the city of Waterville to grab a drug box. Total time from 911 to the time they were back in service and available to go on another call was two hours. So for two hours, that ambulance is, is basically out of commission for anybody else in the city of Waterville.
So.
And that is, you know, a case that we could run into more often. They're not all going to be like that by any means, but they can be. And that's the nature of our, the beast that we run up to every day. We don't know.
Imagining that numbers are flat, well, just imagine that numbers are flat, given the necessity to take even this fraction of the total calls down to Augusta, that's going to drive that 35% up.
Oh, it will, absolutely.
It's going to leave you, leave you over a barrel much more frequently.
Yeah, because you're going to have at least one ambulance and at times two out of service longer, where that stack time will be, will be broadened.
Do you have, do you have a number of how many calls come in when you got an empty house?
Uh, we could probably try to run that, but that's going to be tough to know. We can run our stacked ones, knowing how many calls we have at a time where we already have an ambulance out. That would be a tougher one. We can definitely take a look and try to figure that out.
Well, I, yeah, I mean.
Well, right now, we don't have a third ambulance regardless, so.
Well, I, I understand that and I'm just trying to understand what that demand is and how it may change given this, right?
Well, this is just, I mean, this is a normal day in the life of what we do right now. So the, the shift that went off this morning at 7:00, they started the morning before at 7:00. This is what their day looked like. They had 21 911 calls. They're spaced out just enough like they always are, so they never went to bed. Okay, so we have a crew, this, two crews that have been up for 24 straight hours. At 3:00, a call came in and then they had one at 6:30, I think. So they had a little bit of window there. But if we are running back and forth to, to ACH, which we believe we will be, you know, I have a crew that's been on the road for, you know, close to 24 hours now and then all of a sudden I'm going to send that crew to, to ACH. That, that gives me, that gives me heartburn a little bit. I, I, you know, when you're putting a crew on the road on the interstate that they haven't slept all night long, I mean, there's a reason truck drivers can't do it. These crews have been up all night. And I know you say, well, 21 calls in 24 hours, I mean, I mean, that's only one call an hour, right? But that's not the idea. These crews, they have to have, they have to eat at some point in time during the day, so we're trying to find time to get them lunches, suppers and dinners. And on top of that, though, they have, they have paperwork and there's a lot of paperwork that goes along every time they take a patient to the hospital. So, you know, I, I can look at these two folks in the back of the room and I know that these guys usually are on an engine and they're not on an ambulance, but I can tell you, like these two guys, they're constantly, hey, why don't you take a break for a minute? Go get something to eat, try to catch up on your paperwork, I'll try to run some calls for you. That's what we do every day. And that's just a normal day in the fire department. This morning, we get to work and everything popped off at once and within 15 minutes, we had three calls go out. We did not have a third ambulance, obviously, on today. We, and the other problem, the other problem was we had an ambulance out getting an oil change, so we had two ambulances. So the third call was a four-month-old in extreme respiratory distress, needed to go to Augusta. The crews, because they can do this, they were in the ER dropping off a patient and said, we will go pick that one up like right now. Made it work. If that crew was in Augusta, that wouldn't have happened and we would have waited for an ambulance from out of town to come pick that patient up to take them to Augusta. And I know, you know, I'm just giving you a snapshot, but that is, that's just how it operates in the fire department every day. When we start, when we start running this call volume to Augusta, it will change how we operate in the city. The other thing to look at too is, right now, these, these guys and gals, they take extreme pride in not giving a call away. We, very rarely, I mean, when's the last time we gave a call away, do you remember?
It's, it's very rare because we have geography on our side.
Right. You know, if we can't, if we can't cover a call, we have to have someone come into our city and cover us. And then, you know, as we talked the other, the other night, you know, we, we rely on that revenue to help us keep running and that's a razor-thin revenue stream that we're looking at. And if we start giving calls away, obviously, that's lost revenue. So that, that razor-thin margin starts to go. revenue. So that, that razor-thin margin starts to go down a little bit. And it's, that's all these things that we look at when, when we decide what, what's it look like? How do, how do we make this work, right? You know, I think we talked, talked the other night about our, you know, our five-minute runtime, 65% of our calls were in five minutes. That's amazing. You know, will that change? I think it will. And what that looks like? I wish, I wish I knew. I wish I knew. It's, it's a tough situation that we're in right now. I totally understand that. This hospital closure is not anything that any of us saw coming down the pike. We've been able to do what we do because of how we operate in the city, but without that hospital, it changes things tremendously. Which, Councilor Kleepack and I talked the other day, and he asked me to put together that top 10 that I talked about, which we are in, number seven in the state. I did reach out to the top nine. I excluded Portland because their numbers are gigantic, and looking at those are just, it doesn't make any sense, right? It skews the numbers totally. But I did reach out to the top 10. I have had three of those top 10 have actually gotten back to me and given me all their numbers, which is this, this sheet that you see here. And I think you'll see that, you know, we've been pretty fortunate in the city of Waterville to be able to do what we do with our call volume, and I'm impressed every day when I walk in the fire station and watch how these, how these folks operate. What you'll see on this list, Bangor got back to us, Auburn got back to us, and South Portland got back to us. If I could have you just look at South Portland, I realize that their population is obviously 10,000 people higher than us, but if you look at their call volume, they ran 10 more calls than we did. So it's amazing to think that the little city of Waterville is running South Portland numbers, but that's where we are right now. They operate in a 13-square-mile radius. Their average call time is pretty impressive, 90% of their calls are within five minutes. They had 17 cardiac arrests, just like us, and their ROS rate's 41%. I'm happy to say ours is higher. So, but when you look at that, how are they able to do that call volume? They have 71 full-time firefighters. I have 32. They have three full-time ambulances, we have two. That's where the difference lies. Auburn, same thing, just went to a third ambulance. Bangor's running four. Augusta's running four. Scarborough's running three, Bedford three, I believe Westbrook has three, Brunswick has three, and South Portland has three. And why do they have three? Well, I realize, and it's not lost on me, you know, city manager and myself have had this conversation many times, they have a much higher tax base than we do, which is, is not lost on me. But it doesn't change the fact that we still run what they're running with a lot less people, half, in fact. And that, that is where that razor-thin margin of what we do every day here in the city comes into, and then all of a sudden, you take away one of those pieces of the puzzle, and that's when things change here in the city. And you ask me, how are we gonna make this work? And this is, this is one of the things that I can come up with. The other thing we came up with to help this situation was, we wanted to come at it on two different angles. One of them is this third ambulance, and one of them is community paramedicine. And we had that in the bag, so we thought, you know, if we can make these two things come together, I think we're gonna be okay. And then the community paramedicine piece got pulled out from underneath of us on Thursday, and I don't believe it's coming back. The federal government, they pulled that back, and they put it back in their coffers, and I do not believe that's coming back to us. So this third ambulance, to me, is even more important, more important than it was. We're a small department, and we're running big department numbers. That, that does scare me a little bit. These folks, they, they kill it, kill it every day. In fact, I'm quite amazed at what I watch them do, and then I talk to other chiefs, and they're like, oh, our ambulances go on 1,700 calls a year. Well, mine go on 2,350 calls a year, each one of them. Astronomical numbers, I'm afraid of burning our folks out. I'm proud of them, I'm very proud of them, but there, there comes a point in time where this razor-thin margin, we can't sustain it. And I'm afraid with this hospital closure, that this is where a change has to be made. Again, I know the numbers are big, and, you know, I hate to have to look at those numbers, but I did give you a breakdown on this budget sheet, which kind of breaks it down a little bit better to see where we're really at, because it's hard to say with wage increases, you're looking at this 1.3, but really, this third ambulance, total cost, operating, and wages and benefits, after the potential mileage revenue increase, which we have locked down a little bit better with this run algorithm, that's the grand total on the bottom, 863-361. That is with the wages set at the highest wage that we have for a paramedic. Do I think we're gonna get eight 25-year paramedics? No, I don't. Not at all, right? I mean, that's just impossible. So the wages would be down even lower. So that's kind of what that looks like.
At the bottom of, if you had eight at the bottom of the pay scale, what would that 250 go to, like?
I don't have the pay scale in front of me.
Maybe 150, something like that?
What, which line?
I'm looking at the total labor cost.
Oh, you know, this is, this is, oh, pardon me. This is the eight at the highest level.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So that number would come down.
That number, that 928-722 would come down, yes.
I see.
Where, where is that number?
It's on this sheet.
Oh, I'm looking at this sheet here. I broke everything down in the increase so that we're just looking at the increase of what that would look like.
And if you had eight at the lowest, can you estimate that would be about 700 or whatever, so that the actual cost would probably be around eight or whatever, given a range of experience?
It very well could be, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Right now, the, the market for paramedics is pretty, pretty slim at this point, so we'd be hard-pressed to, obviously, hire eight paramedics.
Yeah, yeah.
Let alone eight firefighter paramedics, the credential, dual-credential, so.
One thing the union did do this year, and I, and I appreciate this very, very much, is we are, we're the only department I know of in the state that does this, but we run a fire medic position. And what that is, is, or a fire AEMT position, we'll hire you with no firefighting, firefighting experience, if you have an advanced or medic license. And you don't have to become a firefighter if you don't want, but if you do, we'll help you get there. But we will hire you as just, as a paramedic or an advanced to get you in the door. That has actually been kind of a game changer to us, and the union, in their contract, they asked if we would want to increase that. Right now, we can have four of them on the fire department, one on each shift. And the, the union brought to the table, which I thought was pretty awesome, they, they gave me the ability to have eight of those on the department, if I so choose, two on each shift, which would be helpful in a hiring process like this. Because, again, it's a, it's a pretty tight market out there right now, we're finding.
So if they're not paramedic now, what would be the cost to get, we would have to educate them, put them through training, and there would be a cost to that, correct?
So unfortunately, and I wish I could, we do not pay for people to go to medic school. They're on their own.
Okay.
We will help them go through advanced school, because that is part of the contract. But as far as medics, we will, we can't, we can't afford it. It's about $30,000 a person. I believe it's something that someday this, we should, we should be doing, because that's what everybody else is doing, and it's a big deal. When I can put a medic in the back of that ambulance, that's a big deal for patient care. It, it just increases the level of care that somebody gets. Almost every department around us is paying for that right now, and they built it into their budget, and they built it in at about $30,000 a student. We are trying everything in our ability to help our folks that are going through, but there's only so much money to do that. But with grants, with sustainability grants, we're trying to help these folks out, to at least give them something to say thank you. Because, you know, going through medic school is a year and a half of your life, and it is busy, very, very busy. With clinical hours and school, it's a big deal. And when they can do that, and then come back to us and want to be part of the Waterville Fire Department, that's a, that's a big deal to us.
So I'm trying to understand this sheet here.
Yeah, yeah, let's talk about it.
Or, yeah, because, you know, Waterville has 16,000 or so people.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, we're doing the same number of calls as, as a, as
So Portland.
Community with 26,000.
Nuts, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so all of those people are from Waterville? They're not, you're not doing, those don't include any mutual aid?
We, I mean, we do, we do get called to Fairfield, we do get called to Oakland, we do go help Winslow once in a while, but the vast majority?
Yeah, I mean.
The amount of times that we're going out of town on calls.
The number guy here will know, but I think one of the biggest things to recognize and to look at, too, along with this list, is, while Everett's looking up those numbers, when you look at, like, just say, South Portland, they have two hospitals, three hospitals that they transport to, excuse me. Auburn has four hospitals within 2.7 square miles is their average runtime to get to the hospital. Bangor has two receiving hospitals and two psychiatric hospitals that they respond to. And we have Thayer. So that's, that's the, that's the deal, right? That is where this whole thing kind of boils down to, is our call volume is extreme for what we, for our community.
I'm guessing that our demographics are such that obviously, we have older people.
Yes.
And people who are not as healthy.
That is 100% correct. That is what we're up against.
Our poverty rate is quite high.
Yep.
It's actually substantially higher than even Portland. We have multiple assisted living, nursing homes, other elderly apartment housing, and so on and so forth.
Well, South Portland has that. Younger generation lives down there, right? They have better health care, because they just do. The farther south you go, the better your health care is. The more north you go, the worse your health care is. It's, it's a terrible thing, but that's the world that we live in right now.
So, Councilor, just to give you a sense, we went out of town to respond to EMS calls 40 times last year. Out of all the calls, we did 40 times. So we're not really called upon very often
Okay.
To go to Oakland, Fairfield, Benton, or Winslow, for that matter.
Is that to provide care, or is that simply to transport?
That is, that, that 40 number is sending an ambulance and transporting a patient to the hospital. So there are times we'll be called to provide, like, a paramedic-level intercept.
Mm-hmm.
That was 39 times.
So we asked you guys to, to provide essentially coverage?
Yeah, but we charge for it.
Yeah.
So, you know, the requesting agency, for whatever reason, they, they don't have a paramedic onboard. The call requires a paramedic, they'll call us as a paramedic asset, and we'll come and assist them, and, you know, we charge the agency direct for that little service.
So essentially, out of the, out of the call response, that was only, that was 40 of them out of that, out of that number, okay?
5,700, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, wow.
So, yeah, vast majority are within the confines of Waterville, yeah.
And, and again, we very rarely, seldomly have somebody come into our city right now to help us out. And we're, we're, we're pretty self-sufficient, running a really, in my, in my mind, one of the better programs in the state of Maine right now. And it's doing exactly what it was intended to do when you folks decided that we should move in this direction. We, we got exactly what we wanted out of it, and that is good coverage, good care, and a very quick response. That's exactly what this was intended to do. And I, I wasn't part of this. This ambulance, the first run, was actually on my first day, but I, you know, would watch it in the papers, and it was a big deal, right? But part of the reason was because of the call times were so long that patient care was not, was not good. And we have changed that narrative and have a very good patient care status in this, in the city.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like Bangor needs to take some notes.
It's funny you say that, because Bangor just set up, asked us if they could come down and have a meeting with us, and they sent us a, a three-page essay on all the questions they have about how we run EMS in the city of Waterville.
Yeah, I mean, they have twice the population, less than twice the, I mean, significantly less than, than twice the call volume, twice the number of ambulances, and, but still twice the response time that you guys are achieving there.
That was their nine-minute average. That's, that's all I got from that. Now, you know, when you
34 miles, squared miles, though.
When you look at these things, they do have a big square mileage.
But they have a big square mileage, but they have twice as many hospitals.
We're doing a lot of things right in Waterville.
Yeah, and their, and their ROS rate is, is half of ours.
Yeah, and that, so that 81 number, that's a lot, and I don't know if they just sent me something that was off. That's a, that's a huge number of cardiac arrests. I could be totally wrong, and maybe they, they're, I can't remember what they're running for, for a database, it might be different than ours, could be different. It's, that's a big number to me. That, that kind of jumped out as something that might be off.
Our number of cardiac arrests, the cardiac arrests that we, that we, that are viable, that we work, the numbers of, of true people that are down in cardiac arrest are, I think, maybe double, maybe triple of that, but what we call unattended deaths, where we pronounce. But those that are, you know, based on protocol and, and other clinical criteria, the ones that we, 17 is the number that we, that we actually worked clinically. So, so that number from Bangor seems, yeah, does seem a tad high that they worked that many, but we can, we can discuss that with Bangor when we meet with them.
This data is great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, I have reached out, I think, I told you back, I've reached out again to the communities that haven't answered back to me, and, and I will keep bugging them until I get the information that I'm looking for. They're probably gonna get sick of me, but that's okay.
You can invite them down to check out your system.
Yeah.
So what happens if you live in Oakland?
You have Delta.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yep, right now, the only ambulance services here are us, Winslow, and Delta.
Okay, not Fairfield?
No.
Oh.
Fairfield is not transport.
No. They run a rescue, very similar to, like, we, what we used to do here in the city. They go out on the call, and I think part of that is because they do have some extended, extended scene times waiting for an ambulance, so they send somebody out to help the patient out until they get an ambulance there.
I know this isn't your proposal, but I, I just don't understand why we don't do something regionally here.
So we've discussed that at length. What's hard regionally is, is it's only us, Winslow, and Delta right now. Delta is a regional ambulance, and Winslow has one ambulance. So it would be hard for us to do something regionally until we had some more players in the game, and then that is definitely something we could look at. EMS is, is a weak, not weird, I don't mean that in a bad way, Everett.
I understand.
EMS is a strange beast right now in the state. It's, 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 I mean, I'm gonna be right up front, it's failing. EMS is failing, the state of Maine right now. And the farther north you go, the worse it is. Yes, I don't disagree, a regional model could work and does work in other states when you have more populated areas that are doing what we're doing. Right now, we just don't have that around us, so a regional model for, to be able to work in this region means that we're gonna be the regional model here in the city of Waterville, running to the other cities, Fairfield, Oakland, because they don't have anything to bring back to us as far as ambulances go. Could we? Could we do that on a fire department level? Makes sense to me, but, you know, I know that has been tried in the past, but do we need four ladder trucks within, between Fairfield, Winslow, Waterville, Oakland? No, we don't. But we all got one.
I mean, that's a huge conversation.
But that's a massive undertaking that we can definitely look at, but the ambulance thing is just
We need to be thinking about it, though.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I just sent you a, a website from the Maine Emergency Medical Services. They, they have a grant for EMS stabilization and sustainability grant. And I think one of our grant writers should write to conduct the third-party study that we had talked about previously but punted on. There are funds available for that and whether, whether someone over there writes it or we get someone in City Hall to write it, or in the, Michael in the planning office, I think that would be effort well spent. Just to, to understand what, what the impediments are, what the opportunities are, whether it actually is, you know, just get some analysis.
Another good document to look at is the, the Maine EMS Blue Ribbon Commission document that came out, not
Two years ago? A year ago? Yeah, I think we're going on two years.
I think we're going on two years now. That talks about EMS in the state of Maine, the perils that it's up against right now, the lack of funding that it's up against right now. That's, that's a really good document to also look through.
I was part of a, a committee these last few months to evaluate Fairfield's program and they're, and they're sort of looking into putting on an EMS program. There were several of us to attend this series of meetings. We evaluated a lot of data, a lot of data, cost of readiness and, and, you know, quality assurance and administrative oversight and it's, it's a huge, huge undertaking for, for an agency that's never been in the transport EMS agents, you know, business before to, to start. But I, I have a final draft of, of that document that was presented to Fairfield and I wouldn't mind sharing it to, to review with you folks as well, just to see what, what it's like and what we deep dived for, for that process.
Good question. So it looks like you have eight positions, correct? That's the, the big piece here. Can you just kind of explain how you came to that number, like the reason for that number? I know you touched on it last time you were here, but just for, you know, the people of Waterville to kind of have a good understanding of that.
Absolutely. So to put, I mean, to run an ambulance, you need two people in it. We have four shifts, so we need eight total. Right now, we have eight personnel on shift and we go down to a seven-man minimum, which we usually are there with, with vacations and with sick outs and what, what have you. So we're usually at seven men. So right now, we run two full-time ambulances, so that's four people on shift. We have one in the engine, one in the tower, and a battalion chief. If we have, if we are fortunate enough to have eight people that day, we put a second person in our engine. So we are, we're pretty much maxed out with what we can do. You, you, we are still a fire department on top of being an ambulance service. So today, if a structured fire goes out, or, or right now, they're at a seven-man shift today. So right now, they have four people in two ambulances, one in the tower, one in the engine, and then a battalion chief was in command of the, of the shift for the, for the day. They roll out of here on a structured fire and this is not uncommon for us. In fact, 60 Elm Street is a perfect example of what happened that day. They rolled up on scene with an engine and one person, a tower and one person, and somebody in command. That's a seven-story building on fire with somebody trapped inside. Three people is not okay. It's actually unsafe. To effectively fight a fire, I have to have somebody in command, somebody in safety, or by NFPA rules, somebody in safety. I should have somebody as staging. I have to have at least one engine that can pump water. So there's one, two, three, four. To effectively make a rescue, I need two in, two out. So there's four more people, so I need eight people to effectively start firefighting operations. That day, both of my ambulances were sitting in a hospital and we rolled up on scene with three. So we came up with, with eight because, well, to effectively put on that third ambulance, I need two people per shift to be in that ambulance. That brings us up to the, to total of eight. That will also effectively, hopefully, give us more firefighters on scene also if they're duly trained when we show up on scene of a structured fire.
And, and how frequently does that happen when you, so we have the 35% stacked EMS, but how frequently is a structural fire stacked on?
Well, we don't, luckily, in this city, we have done a really good job and we don't run a lot of structured fires. Yeah, geez, I probably shouldn't have said that out loud, but I will be here all night tonight. We do not have a lot of structured fires in the city. That number I don't have on me, but I can most definitely get it for you. You know, we, it, it's not, well, if you look at our call volume in EMS calls, I mean, it's not uncommon. The Morissette's fire, I believe we had one ambulance out at the time that morning, so they had, they had a seven-man minimum, so effectively they had five people show up on the fire scene. On the size of the Morissette building is a pretty scary, scary number when you've got five people. One of them has to be in command. So, you know, we run, we run short. It's what we do. We know it, so we just, we do it. But, so effectively, those, those eight people would also hopefully be firefighters at some point in time too and, and be able to fight fire. So that would give us a, a 10-man shift and we could go down to nine if, if for vacations. That would be what, how we would operate.
And then in that case, you could run one ambulance and still have a full complement of structured fire personnel, firefighter.
As long as they're duly trained.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. You know, so you, you, when you look at all that, I mean, it makes, because again, we are a fire department and, and we do have to, we do have to look at that side of the house also and, and so we have to be cognizant of, of what happens when there's a fire in the city. Our call force is a quarter of what it used to be, a third of what it used to be. It's, that's, and that's not just us, that is across the board. You have fire departments like Norridge Walk, Anson, who have always been call force firefighters, uh, call force fire departments. They now have full-time firefighters, believe it or not, because they just don't have a call force anymore, which is a weird thing for me to think about when I started in this business, when I got in Skowhegan. I put on a waiting list to get on the call force. They have five people on their call force now. We used to have 60, we're down to 20. And out of that 20, a good core of our group is in their, is in their mid to late 50s. I don't know how much longer they're going to be, I mean, I know at the right, the young age of 45 that I am, I, you know, I don't fight fire like I used to, right? So when I look at these 50-some-odd-year-old men, I, I am, I'm happy they're there, but it's, it's hard. It's a hard job. You know? It's not easy, right? Like I used to, when I was young and, you know, full of it, I could throw on an air pack, go fight fire, come out, throw on another one, do it again. Good Lord. I would need the ambulance if I tried to do that again. It's just a young man's game. So our call force is, is slowly dwindling every year. You know, we lose a couple, but we don't gain that couple back usually. Tonight, they're, they actually have call force interviews. They have three, three people that they're interviewing and our fingers crossed that they'll, they'll turn out. But the last, I would say, five or six we've put on, they haven't, they haven't lasted a year. It's a massive time commitment. There's really no pay that goes along with it. So when they're young, they love it, right? The fire department is great, but then they get a family and they have kids and the time commitment is too much. And I totally understand that. So
The call force made fire departments quite successful in years past. You'd have a small core group of, of career firefighters that run day-to-day, respond to calls, smaller manageable calls, and if there's a structured fire, they get there with apparatus, establish water supply. Then you get a pile of call firefighters to come in and augment the, the career force and, you know, the pitfalls of modern-day firefighting, you just don't have that anymore. It's, it's tough. And so that's, like Chief said, our call force is dwindling. The handful of folks that show up routinely have been on the force for years and years and years. But once they're gone, I don't, I don't, there's not many left behind them to help augment our, our career force. But that's certainly another story for another day, but it is a problem.
So I've been trying to think about how to ask this question. Because you started off by saying, or not started, but in the presentation at the evening, you said, "We don't like to give away calls," right? "We take pride in not giving away calls." And then there was, then there's the revenue that goes away with giving away the call. But does the revenue that, does the revenue, not giving away the calls and the revenue that's generated by the calls that we give away, is that made up? How does that offset, or how would that offset the additional costs of eight additional people for another ambulance?
I guess
Right? So if we're giving away, if we're giving away calls, but if we're going to add an ambulance just to keep that money, or, you know, that revenue or like, you know, like whatever, like to, like, does it, does it make sense to not have the, to give the call away and not pay the eight ambulance people?
But I guess if we give a call away, we're giving it to Delta or Winslow. Winslow's got one ambulance, is going to be in the same boat we are and Delta, well, we've run in, we did this before with Delta, right? With 20 to 30-minute response times. So it's not even just about giving the call away and losing the revenue, it's not being able to run the call and have a 20 to 30-minute timeframe where
But why does Waterville have to hire, like if that's the case, why can't Delta then hire the eight people?
Because we don't, we don't contract with Delta.
But that's what I'm saying, like, but then that's okay, right? But like, we're still giving, like, we're still serving the same population.
Because Delta, Delta just doesn't run to this. So they don't even, they have, how many ambulances in the city of Waterville right now?
I'm not sure. I think during the overnight, I think they, they have like two on, I think, during the overnight hours.
So I guess we're looking to cover our city and that's what we care about, right? Delta's not looking to cover the city of Waterville, so even if Delta put on eight people, they're not going to get that from them.
But again, I mean, this, this starts the conversation of, of this, that, right? Like what you just said, they don't cover our city. That's regionalization, right? Like that's, that's, that's the end game, right? Like they don't do it now. I mean, essentially, we've pretty much kicked them out, right? Like that, and that, and that was the decision that was made and it was, it's, like I said, it was a great model because we had two hospitals.
Right.
But now we don't have two hospitals, the great model that we put together, which I would send to any municipality in the city, if you're looking to start one, like our model is top-notch.
Right.
But it doesn't meet, it doesn't make sense when you take away that hospital, right? Like, so
I would, I would dare say it makes the operations less efficient. But go ahead.
No, please, you finish your thought.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at it, of course, it, we don't, it's hard to predict the future as far as like the loss of revenue or how many outside agencies mutual aid comes in to, to cover calls. And we're basing, we're basing a lot of that on assumptions, you know, rightfully so. But we're just looking at an operational model. And we, we discuss, we've had, as you know, plentiful conversations with Delta Ambulance and Winslow Fire and, and to sort of make this all work and we have each other's backs, there's no question. Delta has a great product. Winslow Fires, they've come about and they've got a, they've got a good EMS system over there. But the, the problem from our perspective too is that all of our mutual aid partners are in the same situation we're going to fall into. And, and in regards specifically to Delta, they, they do the transfers out of Maine General and they've already projected that, you know, their rate of transfers out of, of Fair could be quite a bit higher as well. So, you know, from our perspective, again, basing on a lot of assumptions and, and talking to our mutual aid partners, relying, relying on mutual aid to come in with good response times efficiently with a paramedic onboard, we, we can't depend on that, unfortunately.
Oh, please.
I guess my question then is, what is Delta doing to cover this shortfall? What is Winslow doing? I mean, we're all affected by this closure, but it's
Right. So you have to remember, Winslow runs 1,000 to 1,100 calls a year?
Yeah.
They don't run 5,700 calls a year. So their one ambulance can cover whatever they believe and I don't know what he believes his rate's going to look like on what he's transporting back and forth. Delta, they said that they hope that they can cover what they have with, they hope they can cover their increase with what they have. I don't know if he can or not. I mean, Chris knows his model better than I do.
Aren't we taking responsibility for the entire region by, by, by stepping up?
No, we're taking responsibility for the city of Waterville.
Yeah. So the, the
I, what I'm saying is our call volume is so high right now as it is that I, I can't cover any more than what we're doing
Yeah.
For our citizens. Our cit, what, what we're doing is not running outside of the city to cover calls, we're running outside of the city to bring the patient, our patients, to the hospital. That's the operational difference between what we're doing, what we're doing now and what we're going to be doing in the future.
But if we had a trans, if Delta were, I mean, if, if Delta was responsible for doing those transports, then, you know, then Waterville Fire Department could stay in Waterville more, we wouldn't have to run to Augusta.
Yeah, but that's our, that's our patients that we're picking up, though.
Yeah.
That's our, that's our Waterville citizens that we're picking up. So we would be asking Delta to come cover our Waterville citizen calls?
Well, they used to do that, right?
They did. But that's why we went to an ambulance model because we had 20 to 30-minute wait times.
That model doesn't work anymore, right? Like, so, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of the question, right? Like, is, and, you know, if we're going to talk regionalization, it wouldn't just be Waterville handling Waterville, it'll be, it'll be a regional, right? So, I mean, this is basically, this is basically forcing regional without it, without calling it
But we don't have a regional model right now.
So I want to point out with the regional model, I think the, another thing we're not discussing here, or we're kind of passing over, is the fact that if we said, okay, we're going to move to a regional model and we, we get Fairfield, Winslow, whoever else in the area involved with it, they're pick, they're going to be picking up our slack with all the additional stuff we have to do and we're going to be picking up their slack. But the thing is, they don't have ambulances. So all we're really doing is being, oh, let's take on more responsibility for Waterville and make our calls last longer.
Yeah. That's the point. I mean, we, we have a stretched capacity that we're trying to deal with for the city of Waterville, but regional, we're not, he's saying that we're not ready for regionalization because our partners are further in the hole than we are. Delta is, is already strapped trying to, to manage their, their piece of the puzzle, right? So they're like, they're not going to be able to fill the gap that, that we are trying to address here.
At their current staff.
Right.
But if they hire eight people, what can they pick up?
Yeah.
That's the question.
But why would they?
So we're asking about a regionalization model between municipal and private EMS, where private EMS, they know what their books need to look like to be financially solvent, you know, amongst municipalities that they cover. That looks vastly different than, than our model just within the confines of Waterville. So how do you navigate the, the financial, you know, cost of readiness amongst everybody? When you've got fire departments, we're duly trained, we do search and rescue, we do high-angle rescue, we do all this other stuff aside from EMS and you've got Delta who does inter-facility transfer and then they just do EMS.
I mean, it, it, it's kind of like, you know, because I understand that we're, we're worried about Waterville and, I mean, I understand the regionalization, but, but again, I mean, don't you think you would be picking up a lot of other towns, you know, patients, slack, work, therefore kind of removing yourselves out of Waterville? I mean, this is a Waterville issue. I mean, we, we can talk about Delta, Winslow, Fairfield, Oakland all day long, but at the end of the day, you know, our concern as a citizens of Waterville and making sure that if I call 911, I have somebody who is going to be at my doorstep within five minutes to take care of whatever ailment that I may have. Now, as far as other municipalities are concerned, that's something that they're going to have to deal with. to deal with, with whatever local government that they have. But for right now, I mean, we, we need to worry about the citizens of Waterville and the capacity that Waterville Fire and Rescue can, can, can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, sorry.
Well, please, why don't you share what I'm talking about?
Well, no, I completely agree with Councilor Gilli. I mean, we're, our responsibility is to the city of Waterville and also to our fire department, okay? They are already so stretched, and we're not, we're not even to that point yet of this hospital closing. And I just think it's really important to stay focused on the city of Waterville and our fire department and their needs.
Chief and I, Chief and I, as you can imagine, we've, we've talked about this to death. We've lived it, we've eaten it, breathed it, as you can imagine. The one thing about this business is that it is our job to consider worst-case scenarios. That is our job. And we've, between him and I, we've seen a lot and done a lot of great, great things. And, and you're right, I, our responsibility and the positions that we hold is to the citizens of Waterville. That's where the accountability lies, that's where accountability lies with you folks as well. So, some of those worst-case scenarios and, and, you know, the things that keep me up at night is, you know, two ambulances going bumper to bumper down to Augusta to do transports, and we have a cardiac arrest here in town, where our child gets hit on a bike. Who's going to come, who's going to come get him or her? I would love to say, Delta Ambulance with a paramedic will, will come screaming into town and cover that call for us, and we'll be thankful, we'll be thankful for that. Or Winslow. But at this moment in time, that is, we can't rely on that. We can only try to do what we can to, to help augment the system here in Waterville. And that's why, this, that's our perspective, and that's our approach with this.
And I, say, for instance, though, like, because you had a conversation about, say, for instance, structural fires. Now, I understand that, you know, obviously, you guys rely on mutual aid. Mutual aid, if there's a structural fire in Waterville, there's going to be mutual aid, and there's other agencies that are going to be responding to it.
That's correct.
So, say, for instance, there's a medical call now, there's, and there's a structural fire going on. Is that, I mean, is that a possibility to, that you will be like, hey, we, we got to go? I mean, or we stay, or how does that?
So, yeah, so depending on what we have for a fire, very often, our battalion chief will pull the two folks that are on that ambulance and try to keep them to the side, try to not get them too involved so that they can go out on the next call. Or, we are very proactive and will say, hey, you know, Delta, we do have a big call going on in this city, can you come cover us? And that gives them the heads up that it's not an emergency, but we need you to come closer to the city of Waterville to cover us during this time.
If an emergency were to arise.
That's correct.
So, I mean, there's conversations that you, you guys are having with Delta Ambulance in order to, to have some type of, you know, not necessarily a mutual aid agreement, but kind of a mutual aid agreement if, if something hits the fan.
Correct. And then, something like that gives them plenty of notice that they're not, it's not a 911, but it's, they'll pull a truck down closer to us to say, hey, we'll cover this call. Or, and, and sometimes what we'll do is we'll use them for our EMS coverage for the fire, because we got to have an ambulance there in case somebody gets hurt. And we'll keep a truck to the side and run that truck, and run our own calls in the city, and have Delta be our ambulance covering the fire.
And, you know, and, you know, it's not to besmirch the, you know, the other agencies. I mean, I mean, all first responders work hard and are stretched far too thin. But, you know, obviously, the, the goal here is to ensure that, as, as we've previously mentioned, that the citizens of Waterville are covered, taken care of, and that includes the brave men and women of the Waterville Fire Department.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we're going to talk about regionalization, regionalization, it's not like some kind of thing where we can wave a magic wand, sit down, you know, and decide, oh, suddenly we're regional, let's all have a beer. It's going to require, it's going to require significant resources. So right now, you know, our, our, our local House Rep is, is not here with us tonight, but there, there's LD 176 in the main legislature right now, an act to establish a regional ambulance service in Southern Penobscot County, right? And so the state's ponying up to, to make that happen in, in Southern Penobscot County. That, there should be, you know, there could be a bill like that in front of the state for us, and that's what would actually be, be able to, some, some kind of thing like that is going to be what's necessary, right? Because we, we don't have the assets in the region to be regional yet. When we do, there, the players we've already mentioned are all going to be an important part of that. Waterville, you know, one of the most central parts of, of that, of, of that system, you know, it, whatever, whether it's going in, in, in this budget, or the next year's budget, or wherever, or never, I don't know. But if, if a third ambulance is, is something that the citizens of Waterville through us think that we can support, that's, that will, it's not going to be wasted resource, ever, right? That is going to be something that will be to our credit and to the, the service of whatever regional solution makes sense. It's, it's hard to know what we need as a region and what the, what we even mean by region, right? Until we have like a more thorough analysis. I haven't seen the, the analysis that you were, that you were talking about, you were going to share this other document with us, but, you know, when, when, when we think about adding, you know, more capacity to the assets we have here, it's, it's not about trying to recoup, you know, the, these like mutual aid costs or, or whatever. It's not about that. It's about, and they were very clear about that. It's about addressing, it's about addressing response times. And response times is sort of a, a numeric way of reducing health outcomes, people's, people's lives, right? And so that, that's really what we're, we're talking about here. Emergency is one of the fundamental services that a community can have. And, it's, it's hard to know. We don't know what's, what is really coming, what's coming down the line with the closure of inland. It's hard to quantify. We can make our best guesses, our best projections, but, but that's, at the end of the day, all they, all they are, right? And so what we have, what we have to do is to decide whether we're going to be, you know, based on our best guess, whether we're going to be proactive, or whether we're going to wait and see and be reactive, right? And we could be, the wait and see and be reactive is going to be one that gives us an easier bottom line to, to sell to our citizens, but at the same time, those are the same citizens that are going to be having cardiac arrests, whose, whose spouse, or themselves, or their neighbor, are going to be having health emergencies that, that need the service that we're, you know, the community is trying to provide. You know, I'm, I'm not telling you what I necessarily think the outcome is, I'm just trying to outline the stakes of, of the decision that we have in front of us.
I also think too, something to, to think about is this sets us up for the future very well. As we know, there are lots of housing projects going on in the city right now. King Street, and Washington Street, and Six Water Street, and Front, the Front Street project, and those all are intended to bring people to the city of Waterville to live. And there are more, there are more that are, that are being looked at down the path. And as we bring more folks into the city, and as the city grows in population, so has to grow your emergency services at some point in time, because those people do require services. And as, as you grow, you have to grow with them. Sustainability is hopefully the way that you can do it, not like grow so fast and then you can't keep up with it. I mean, you want sustain, sustainable growth. But this, this would keep us and put us into the future and, and serve us for a very long time as, as this city continues to grow.
Well, I mean, just looking at the comps that you provided us, this is looking to the future, but it's also just kind of looking to the moment.
Correct.
Yeah, it's looking at the moment that we're in.
I, I think what we're not talking about is, is the model in terms of, I mean, in terms of making it work out, in, in terms of paying for it, right? I mean, there's no question that this is what should happen. And you mentioned Delta having their model, and they, they know what it takes to cover their, their costs, and they do, you know, they do what they need to do to balance their books. But our books are balanced by the people of Waterville. And so, that's tough.
But even private, and even private EMS, they, they are increasing subsidies, you know, and most, most will, you know?
Yeah.
As costs increase.
They charge Fairfield 35 bucks a head right now.
Right.
To cover their city. Or, or all of them, I guess they do, yes.
Right. So people are paying for it.
I just want to make sure people are clear that EMS is not a profitable business pretty much anywhere. It's, it's a hard act, it's, it's a, it's a tough business.
And-
And that cost of readiness is very expensive.
People never knew what the cost of an ambulance service really was. It's just always been kind of there, and it's never been put out there in the public-
Right.
-until we are now in, you know, and, well, if you look at the Blue Ribbon Commission, an EMS crisis across the, the state, and how much does EMS really cost to run? And there's, you know, there's a reason why that, you know, Delta had to start charging per capita, because it's, it's not a free service to run by any means. You know, Reddington does not charge per capita, but Reddington is owned by a hospital, and they run their own ambulance service. So it is part of their model. So, and, and they run, well, Everett can tell you this for a fact, they run tons of interfacility transfers, and I mean, down to Portland, Boston, they go all over the place, and that's, that's, you know, that's how they make their money, and that's how they keep their budget. But, yeah, I mean, for years, nobody knew what it cost to run an ambulance service, and now, we do. And that's why, you know, and this is right from the, the director of Delta's, you know, mouth the other day, was they were, they were in the red, and they had to make some operational changes. And part of that change was charging per capita fees. And those have, those have gone up a lot in the last couple of years, so. There is a cost associated with it, yes, absolutely.
So, their per capita cost is passed on to a municipality based on the number of calls a year, or is it passed on?
It's a per capita charge, so per, per person.
Okay. So they don't, so they charge Oakland, for instance-
Correct.
-a certain amount to cover them.
Right. Like, you and your husband would pay 75 bucks, oh, 70 bucks. That's what they bill, so that would shut in your taxes and-
Okay.
You'd get a $70 bill for ambulance service, whether you use it or not, yeah.
So if I understand this correctly, if we were to take this as is, the 863,000, that would end up moving our total budget from 3.89 in its current state to somewhere around 8%. I'm not doing all the, nitpicking math, but like, roughly, we'd be at 8% increase for the city. I'm not sure offhand what that translates to per, you know, $100,000 property value, but I, for me, it feels like, while that is steep, doing so to keep our ambulance times from being 35 minutes or something, if we have to rely on Delta coming from who knows where, it's, it's probably worth that cost.
Do we know, Brian, what the, what the mil rate, what's the, I know there's a formula for-
1.22 million is one mil.
He's right. It's roughly 1.22 per mil.
So this would raise-
906, 618, plus 852, 363, is 1.75 million. So it'd be about a mil and a third, a mil and a quarter. Buck and a, buck and a quarter, buck and a third. About 80 cents.
Uh, 1990 right now, correct.
We're at 1990.
$20.90.
Right.
I thought we were at 20.
Was it 20 even?
20, 20 million, I think it was 20 mil.
I thought it- Christina, correct, 20 even?
20 even.
20, so-
So what do you do, 21, 2130 estimated? 21, 25, 2136, 21, you know?
For the whole budget?
For the, yeah, yes. With the, with the third ambulance, yeah. Right now, without it, we're, we're at about 80 cents, probably with an 80 cent change.
Yeah.
So, would you add the, the additional, 852?
There are some potential other things that will impact and lower it a little bit. We thought, get through this conversation tonight, see where you want to be, and then we have some adjustments still to make for little things like gasoline reduction for the public works, and things that were talked about at prior meetings that came up, that will vary those numbers. So we still have a little bit of work to do, but we were trying to get some feedback from you as to put it in at the larger amount and work from there, or leave it as it is, and see where it is before you add that in, so.
Because we also have the two union contracts that we're still negotiating, right?
But that's in this budget already, so-
Okay.
You know, those numbers are baked, those high numbers that we put in are baked in already at a, at a certain percentage.
And, this is also the 863, it's also at the maximum-
True.
-pay rate, so.
That's right, that's right.
That is correct.
That's the most conservative number. Do you want me to leave it as it is and then pull the number to the summary? Do you want me to upgrade it to the bigger amount, and then you'll work with it from that point? What would the council prefer?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the summary page with the additional. Just to clarify all the rough num, the rough math that we all did-
I agree.
...on our iPhones here at this meeting. Let's, let's take a look exactly what we're looking at.
So we could leave both under the EMS for now, but adjust the summary to show the full amount of the EMS coming in, and adjust from there? That's what you would like?
Yeah.
And we'll make the final-
They'll be a good start.
Okay.
Have that there when we're making the summary.
Because that should be, I mean, that, I mean, that should be the peak, right? That should be the biggest number, right? Because then everything, every other conversation that we'd have would reduce that, any, you know, as we, if we move forward with this program, every decision that would be made would be, would just simply bring it down, right? So, let's start with the highest number, and then work backwards. All right. Any other questions for either of these fine gentlemen this evening?
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, if you folks, you call me anytime you want, come see me at the station, or I'll come to you. I can, I can try to answer any more questions that we can come up with. Everett's on vacation, so if it's too technical, wait.
I'll be in Myrtle Beach, but Chief can call him.